All right, good evening, everyone. I am going to call this meeting to order on October 27th, 2020. Welcome, everyone. I hope you are having a good week so far. And I'm going to ask the city clerk to get us started by calling roll, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Present.
Commissioner McElroy?
Present.
Commissioner Watkins?
Present.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Harless?
Present. And Commissioner McElroy, would you lead us in the invocation tonight, please?
Sure would. Let us pray. Our dear heavenly father, we are so thankful for your love and care for us. And we come to you in uncertain times. So many things seem to be troubled in our country and in our world, and we just lay them at your feet. We pray especially for help with the virus. Help our scientists and medical personnel to make great advances to protect us that a vaccine might be ready soon and good treatments available. We also pray that we will all make good decisions about what is safe for us to do and just guide us in that. We also pray for our country as we go through elections. We are so thankful for this freedom. May we never take that for granted, that we have to elect into office those in the local, state, and federal government. And we pray your people would be put in place and that then we would unify as a community, as a state, and as a country to take care of one another well. We pray for our schools that are challenged right now to keep people safe. We pray you give the teachers and administrators good ideas, good wise ways to handle students and teachers and just bless them. And we also pray the kids will be able to learn in a healthy way. We pray for decisions that we make tonight, that they would be guided by your hand, that we would have the discernment, the wisdom, the compassion, the humility to serve our community well. We ask all this in Jesus's name. Amen.
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 Thank you, Commissioner. And Commissioner Abraham, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
I will. We'll count down from three, two, one. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we have a city manager. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have one deletion, the deletion of the Midtown Alliance presentation. They've asked for that to be moved back to the next meeting.
Okay, great. All right, we're going to jump into some proclamations tonight. We have some celebrations and also just some honoring to do tonight. And first off, we are going to celebrate the 50th anniversary of the Paducah Convention and Visitors Bureau. I am going to read a proclamation and then Mary Hammond, our director, is going to make some statements. And I would say, Mary, I can imagine, I'm just going to close my eyes and imagine the big party we would be having if we were in COVID days right now. So I'm just going to imagine that as we read this proclamation. Okay, so here we go. I think someone's going to pull it up on the screen, hopefully, if that worked out. Let me find it one more time on my computer. All right. Whereas the Paducah Convention and Visitors Bureau established offices and a visitor's center at 128 Broadway in the heart of historic downtown Paducah to welcome travelers from all around the world to Paducah. And whereas the Paducah CVB has put much effort and emphasis on achieving international accreditation through Destinations International, through the Destination Marketing Accreditation Program, and an industry distinction that defines quality and performance standards in destination marketing and management for sustainable economic development. And whereas Paducah has been put on the map for many amazing reasons, but the CVB worked tirelessly to successfully pursue Paducah's designation as a UNESCO Creative City, strategic opportunities to preserve the destination brand and differentiate Paducah as a quality place to live, work, and invest. And whereas new platforms and technologies have been warmly embraced in order to tell Paducah's story, including paduka travel, the official destination resource, which serves to inspire and inform visitors, planners, and locals to fully experience Paducah Creative City, hashtag Paducah Creative City. And whereas the staff at Paducah CVB have fostered the vitality of Paducah's visitor economy and the growth of tourism's cultural and economic impact for the benefit and well-being of every resident. In 2019, the tourism industry welcomed approximately 2.4 million visitor trips, which generated tourism spending in McCracken County totaling $273.54 million, supported 2,495 jobs, and generated $21.26 million in state and local taxes. And whereas Paducah CVB will continue pushing forward with their social vision by fostering culture, creativity, and innovation as a means to sustain development, making the city of Paducah a great place to work, visit, and live. Now, therefore, I, Brandy Harless, mayor of Paducah, Kentucky, in recognition of this important initiative, do hereby proclaim October 20th, 2020, as the 50th anniversary of Paducah Convention and Visitors Bureau. And as citizens of Paducah, Kentucky, I charge you to support tourism by knowing your community and the rich heritage of our river city. Experience the rich culture expressed through the arts, music, theater, books, festivals, and foods. But mostly, do what you do best, be yourself, and extend the hand of friendship to visitors and newcomers to Paducah. Congratulations, Mary, and to all of your team.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, allow me to say a few things I have to after 50 years. As you can imagine, my mind's been full this past week, thinking about those who came before me. It's been pretty emotional, those who laid the groundwork for tourism in Paducah, thinking about the challenges they faced and the satisfying rewards that made it all worthwhile. And Neil Carroll, the first executive director, the one who started it all. His organizational skills are very evident in the CVB archives. He was followed by John McDermott. And then the dynamic former mayor and Kentucky State Representative, Dolly McNutt, who was an inspiration to the community when she became director and brought the creative Mimi Wiley with her. Mimi, who dreamt of a performing arts center, of a barbecue festival. Mimi, who helped organize Paducah Hospitality Association with the help of Kentucky Restaurant Association and Kentucky Lodging and Hotel Association. And Roe Morrison, Delphine Operly, who each saw major changes during their terms as director. The distinctive skills and the knowledge that each director brought were essential to the development of the Paducah's tourism industry. Each was part of growth, part of the partnerships that brought us dreams. It brought friendships that lasted us a lifetime. They, they were leaders who saw tourism as an economic engine for the community, and they saw it as a way to grow our quality of life. They're all respected across the Commonwealth for their contributions. So many shared memories of the projects and passions across the state. Neil continues to support his goal of growing the tradition of top-quality baseball, especially at Brook Stadium. Both Neil and Roe have really deep roots in Kentucky. Roe's commitment to downtown, to quilting, to the flood wall murals, continues to bring people together to preserve our heritage, that culture, our culture of Paducah. Of course, that has to include the culinary heritage. The great organizer, Delphine, the champion of the River Discovery Center, ensured Paducah was involved in leadership across the state. You know, tourism touches lives in ways and emotions, and that community support is really important. It's vital to the success of tourism, the support from the citizens and the businesses, the elected officials, organizations, and that strong board that represents the hospitality industry. You alluded to it, Mayor, but the first comment anyone ever makes about Paducah always seems to be about the people and the friendliness of the people. The reach of Paducah tourism is just multiplied by those citizens who open their arms, our local partners who make up our dedicated hospitality industry. You know, our local ambassadors, you know, the official and the unofficial. Those ambassadors encourage us to wear red, the international color of hospitality. They tell us to welcome visitors, tell our story, and make a new friend. The late Mary Ray Okun, she was Secretary of the Kentucky Tourism Cabinet, often said, "Tourism is a fun industry, but it's serious business." The CVB's been blessed, oh, with dedicated staff and board members. We're thankful for those currently on board, and we miss those members of our CVB family who have served in the past. I hope everybody, each person knows how vital they were to the success of tourism in Paducah, that each played a very definite role in helping us reach this 50-year milestone. I hold those memories dearly, and I look forward still to new adventures, not just for myself, for all of us as we continue to define ourselves as a community, a community that cherishes the past and still looks created creatively to the future. Thank you.
Congratulations. Great words. Thank you so much. Well, I think it is definitely, if the commissioners want to take an opportunity right now to say some words, I do think this is such a special moment to be recognizing how important tourism has been to our community and just the dynamic work, as you mentioned and outlined, that the directors over the years have been able to kind of build upon. And I believe that even, even though COVID has, you know, stopped travel for so many ways, there's so many creative ways that you can keep telling Paducah's story. And frankly, hopefully, we'll start to attract some of those people here that may not have just been visitors, but maybe they're looking for a new home. We know there is a migration of people happening. So thank you for setting the stage. And I'll turn it over to any other commissioners that want to make a comment.
I would. Mary, I want to thank you for your tireless effort and work to make Paducah a destination. And the numbers show how successful you've been. It's probably our number-one industry, and it brings so much money in, creates so many jobs, a lot of people don't realize. And that's, that's what brings new opportunities for our area, for jobs, for our people, and, and businesses and expansion. And so we just appreciate you. You're the face of Paducah and tourism and, and the industry, and you're doing, you're doing a marvelous job. You're well-recognized and respected statewide. I know that from being in Frankfurt and when you came up there. And you have a great relationship with people in the, in the tourism industry in the entire state. And so I just want to thank you for all you do for this area, and we appreciate you.
Mary, I was going to take that on a national level, because this week we had our DC fly in, and you were such a part of organizing that we had the top people from Destinations International, US Travel, National Department for the Arts, National Humanities, National Historic Preservation, and I'm probably leaving someone else.
American for the Arts.
And Americans for the Arts, and they all know you by your first name. They know you.
They're friends.
And they, they're your friends, and they talked about how Paducah punches above its weight. It's a mighty city, and you have been the face of that for us. So thank you for, to you personally, your staff, and to the Paducah Convention Visitors Bureau for the history that you have put in for, in our community for 50 years. Congratulations. I wish we were having a big celebration.
I know.
You will.
I'll take it down to a personal level, Mary, and I'll just say, your love for Paducah, for Paducah is contagious. You are one of our biggest cheerleaders, and I think after people have talked with you for just a few minutes, they love Paducah even more. So thank you for, for living that personally, as well as professionally.
Well, thank you. We say it's not a job, it's a lifestyle.
Yeah, it is.
Just a comment, you guys, you do a great job. And it's, it's just an example of the partnerships that the municipal have. You got folks out there like Mary and her, and her crew, that their job is to promote the city. And they do a great job, and you, you, you'll be in some, some places and you'll thumb through a magazine, and there's a, there's a hit, there's a, this producer's like, hey, that's where I live. I'm in this place. And let me tell you about it. So the footprint is for a, for a small community. Marketing-wise, you guys do a great job, and congratulations to you and your staff and everyone that's put in on this.
We're very fortunate that we are not, we don't have all of our eggs in one basket, so that our tourism product is very diverse. You know, we, we talk about our arts, the culture, the outdoors, the history. It's, it is so far-reaching, and then to have business travel that, that balances leisure travel. So that, yeah, we've been hurt during COVID, but we haven't been hurt like others. And Gerald, you were saying, and with the, the top industries, you know, there's such a partnership, and we're all so inter-reliant upon one another. And, and that's just what makes our community set for the future, and I'm excited. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for joining us tonight, Mary, and celebrating with us. Thanks for asking us to be a part of it. Absolutely. Okay, we're going to move into some awareness raising, but also another honoring tonight. And we have Mary Foley with us from Merriman House, and I'm going to start off by reading our next proclamation. And then we'll have Mary Foley make some comments. Whereas the state of Kentucky recognizes October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month to educate the public about the seriousness of domestic violence in Kentucky communities. And whereas Kentucky's rate of domestic violence is higher than the national average. And whereas over one in three women experience sexual violence, physical violence, and/or stalking victimization by an intimate partner during her lifetime. And in Kentucky, the rate is actually, actually, that rate was 37.3 nationally. This rate is 45.3% in Kentucky. And whereas 47.1% of women experience psychological aggression in the form of name-calling, insulting, or humiliating an intimate partner, and coercive control, which includes behaviors that are intended to monitor and control or threaten an intimate partner. And Kentucky has the highest rate of every state in the nation at 57.2%. And whereas, beyond injury and death, survivors of intimate partner violence are more likely to suffer damage to their mental and physical health while it is an ongoing health crisis. And whereas, the Merriman House Domestic Crisis Center has been committed to saving, building, and changing the lives of victims of domestic violence since 1978. And whereas founder Merriman Kemp has devoted her life to spreading goodness through the vehicles of love, peace, and courage, and has worked tirelessly to improve the lives of the oppressed, underserved, and marginalized. And whereas, much remains to be done to end intimate partner violence, substance abuse, and the devastating effects of homelessness, mental illness, and interpersonal trauma. Everyone has a part to play in taking action steps to improve the lives of others in his or her community. Now, therefore, I, Brandy Harless, mayor of Paducah, Kentucky, in recognition of this important initiative, do hereby proclaim October 30th, 2020, as Advocacy and Action Day.
Domestic violence and intimate partner violence, those are those social justice issues, those dark issues sometimes that are the more of the underbelly that we don't often want to talk about, even though they must be talked about. And so I appreciate the opportunity to sit before you and to, had to have that conversation by going over those statistics. October is just one month where we highlight, but as we know, the efforts and the things that we do and the things that we need to do happen all the time, every day. And so while it is my job as executive director to shine a light on a very dark issue, it is also my job as executive director to talk about the hope that is found in the type of work that we do every day and to say that clients do get better, and they do heal, and communities do strengthen, and we can make a difference. And Kentucky does not have to lead the nation in those kinds of ways, but instead can lead the nation in the models of how we respond and how we improve the communities in which we live. But also, I am here tonight because I want to honor the founder who has, whose shoulders I have the honor to stand on, and so many before me, but certainly her. Merriman Kemp has responded to an issue that was, if it's hard to respond to in 2020, I can only imagine how difficult it was able to respond to in the late 70s. And yet she stood in a gap where there was no one else to stand, and she said yes when no one else could. And she opened up her home when no one else would. And so I think after all of these years, I don't know why we didn't think of it before, but I think now more than ever, just with the things that she is facing and the growth that the Merriman House has experienced, we felt it only appropriate to ask you to honor that day in honor of her. And so the, kind of the four things that I jotted down that Merriman Kemp reminds me of, and I think models in her life, and has certainly allowed us to build the Merriman House on, is number one, she always says, "Speak truth to power." It doesn't matter what kind of power, it doesn't matter where it shows up, and it doesn't mean that it's a bad thing, but you have to be able to speak truth to power. So in, in my case tonight, many of you sit in seats of power locally. You make decisions, you hear things, and so it's my job to come before you and speak the truth to you, and that truth is what you heard in that proclamation. And so we always want to honor her in that way, that speak the truth when it's hard truth, when it's easy truth, it doesn't matter. Speak the truth to those in power. Spread goodness. Merriman Kemp believes in spreading goodness where you go. One of my favorite stories of hers was when she called because she was behind somebody carrying potatoes. They were going to go and make a donation, and the potato truck broke down, and all the potatoes ran across the road, and there she's. the potatoes ran across the road, and there she's out gathering those potatoes to bring them to the Merriman House. And then I think they ended up at other homeless shelters and soup kitchens, and that's just who she is. And so, I think spreading goodness is something that she teaches. She often says, "Do something." Everybody doesn't have to do everything, but everybody can do something. And Merriman Kemp, I think, has just turned 83. Not only did she show up at the duck race that we had on Saturday, but she showed up at last night's board meeting despite her health struggles and despite the weather. And so, she is a believer in doing, so she really does put action in play. And finally, if you've ever received an email from her or any correspondence, it does, you will get the sign-off, "Peace, Love, and Courage." And I think those are just really good things to live by, that you're a part of spreading peace and maintaining peace and unity, that you make sure that you're showing love louder than anything else, and that you take a good dose of courage when you get ready to do all of those other things that I just said. And so, tonight, we just want to thank you. The Merriman House Board and Staff want to honor her, and we want to remind you that October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and that you in your seats do have an obligation to help us build a stronger, healthier community, and we appreciate the ways that you've done that so far. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mary, so much for joining us. And I want to ask you guys, a big round of applause for your comments about Merriman. Do you think Merriman's watching tonight?
I sent her the link. I don't know if she is. Very well could be.
Well, they are recorded on YouTube, so hopefully, she is able to watch it in hindsight, but I do think that this Commission probably wants to take a moment to just say a few words to Merriman directly. I know I do. I was almost in tears reading that proclamation and then hearing you talk about Merriman and the intense contribution that she has made to this community. I mean, it's just unbelievable that someone could be so selfless and to give like she's given and to not quit. I mean, on an issue that's that big, that looks that devastating, that the statistics are still bad, to not quit and to keep pushing. Merriman, I hope you see this, and I want to say thank you. I want to say you inspire me, and I just want to say that we're here for you and we're praying for you, and we will always honor you. I have to quit now. Who's next?
Yeah, I'll jump in, and you can't quit. I mean, those numbers, we all, those numbers have, I'm pretty sure, that's touched all of us in some capacity. And Merriman and I, we share one thing, we're from the same, from the same small town in Tennessee, New Tennessee. When I found that out, I was blown away. Back in the, back in the early, about mid-'90s, we were doing the street ministry, and we would see kids that were part of that whole domestic violence scene, and they're all messed up and making those drives and just trying to do what you can do to make a difference. It takes, it takes a heart of flesh to do that. And so, she set the bar high, and I appreciate her so much for her work, and she continues to do it.
Thank you.
I think the Merriman House is such an integral part of our community. I work at Starfish Orphan Ministry, and I see women at the very beginning, when they have just landed at the Merriman House, and they are shattered, and they are broken, and they don't have any clothes. So, you guys get them over to us, we share all the clothes they want, and then they go in through their programs. And it's amazing because they come back to us at the end because they're now ready to set up a home, and we help them put furniture into that home. And the difference, very often, I get to see both ends, and the difference in those women, the confidence they have, the skills they have learned, is just blows me away. So, Merriman, you started something we will not let stop, and we all need to do something, that's for sure. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Well, I thank you, Mary, for sharing, and I hope Merriman is watching or will go back and watch this. I've known her for many years. We, she was one of the first career women I met when I started in my career many years ago. We were both active with the Paducah River City Business and Professional Women, and I saw the impact that she was making for women then across the state with that involvement with our State Association. And honestly, I don't think I realized the impact at the time that she was making in our local community, because in some ways, she was silent about it. She wasn't one that bragged about it, she just wanted to help people, and she still is today, and what a great honor it is to have this organization in her name, and to hear that she was there on Saturday with you. And I'm thinking, well, man, I should have been, I wish I'd been there too. I wasn't, but I admire her very much and appreciate the hard work that she put in for women all across the state and across this country. So, thank you to Merriman, and thank you, Mary, for being and sharing that with us tonight. Thank you for all the hard work at the Merriman House. We're honored to have you in our community and appreciate it, very much appreciate it.
Thank you, Sandra.
Thank you, Mary Foley, for all the hard work that you do in a difficult situation. And as Commissioner Abraham said, it's something that, we all know someone that's affected. And the devastation that happens to these people and what they go through can be a real nightmare, and some of them lose their lives over it. And it's, it takes a lot of courage for them to try to make it through, and you, it takes a lot of courage for you and your staff and your organization to get involved in this because it's risky. You're probably threatened many times yourselves by being involved, interjecting yourself in these type of situations. And so, we appreciate the courage that you exemplify and your staff and the Merriman House and what you're doing in changing people's lives and giving them a new start to get away from the old and know that there is a new life ahead of them. And you point them and you give them the skills, the courage, the confidence, and get them the legal representation and everything, the financial resources to make a new start and have a new life. So, I just appreciate you and honor Merriman Kemp. She's been a dear friend for a long time, and talk about a tenacious, strong, courageous lady. She's a real leader, a real inspiration for anyone who knows her, and she is just, to think, like you said, of back in the '70s when no one was doing anything like this, and just interjecting yourself and opening your home up to people who are being abused takes a saint. And so, and Merriman Kemp is that. And she will have a big mansion waiting on her one of these days, I know, and certainly deserving of so much honor from so many people in this community for making such a difference in people's lives. And we appreciate you taking the baton and running with it and to finish the race and keep going, get people across the finish line. So, bless you and your organization, Merriman Kemp. We honor you all, and we thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
All right, man, it's going to be hard to move on from that. I wish we had, we need a break. All right, I'm going to move us into the business portion of our meeting, and we're going to head on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member requests. Does anyone have anything they would like to remove for separate discussion tonight? No? Okay, I'm going to ask the city clerk to read the items recommended for approval, please.
Two minutes for the October 13, 2020 Paducah Board of Commissioners meeting. Receive and file documents. Personnel actions. Appointment of David Godfrey to the Main Street Board to replace Zachary McMillan, whose term has expired. This term shall expire June 10, 2024. A municipal order authorizing mayor to execute a contract with Sprocket Incorporated in an amount of $40,000 for Makerspace and Entrepreneurial Development Services. A municipal order approving an employment agreement between the City of Paducah and Amy Clark for employment as Director of Parks and Recreation and authorizing the mayor to execute same. A municipal order authorizing the transfer of real property located at 432 Broadway to PGJM LLC for $7,500 to provide for outdoor dining and entertainment space associated with the rehabilitation of 428 through 430 Broadway, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same.
I'm making motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
I would say on the...
Hold on, let's finish it. Oh, sorry.
What I was seeing on the consent agenda, there were some wrong numbers on there for the 7,500 and the 40, yes, there it is, $40,000 for Sprocket. I think it originally showed 400,000. It's 40,000, and on Broadway, it was 7,500.
Yes, on the screen, it was wrong, but on the agenda, it's correct.
Yes. I just didn't want the public to have the wrong numbers.
Okay.
So, aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. I think it's the way the comma versus the period shows up on that, in that font, that was confusing, it looked like $7 million.
All right. Thank you for noticing. Okay, we're going to move into the adoption of ordinances, and I'm going to ask the city clerk to read item 2A, please.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Approving a Renewal Lease Agreement with Forest Hills Village Incorporated and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute Said Lease." This ordinance is summarized as follows, "That the City of Paducah hereby approves an agreement with Forest Hills Village Incorporated and authorizes the mayor to execute said lease agreement. The term of the renewal lease shall be for 10 years, commencing January 1, 2021, and ending December 31, 2030."
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please. Oh, sorry, any questions or comments about this item? We heard about it at the last meeting. Has anything come up since then? No? Okay, I'm going to ask the city clerk to call roll, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
I'd like to make one comment before I vote. I'd like to cast my vote in honor of the late Max Sakranowski, who grew up there and worked there for almost 30 years, and his heart was Forest Hills Village. And we met and talked several times about concerns, and some of those things were implemented into this new contract, and so, I just want to cast my vote in honor of the late Max Sakranowski. Yay.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
All right, moving on to the Agenda City Manager. Do you have any comments tonight?
I have none, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Board of Commissioners, any comments tonight?
I think we should congratulate Amy Clark as our new Director of Parks and Recreation.
Absolutely. Congratulations, Amy. She's on here with us.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. And I want to finish because I have my Rock the Vote t-shirt on, and I just want to remind everybody that to go vote.
Go vote.
This opportunity, you have many more days to go vote. It's probably, the lines are going to get worse the closer we get, so go vote. You can vote all week, you can vote on Saturday, you can vote on Monday, and you can vote on Tuesday. So, you've got plenty of opportunity to show up. I do know there is a local group of people, actually, the people who've been doing the Rock the Vote registration, get out the vote, they're also working on some rides to the polls. So, that phone number should be popping up soon in our local media and on Facebook. If people need rides to the polls, there are people who are willing to work with them to get them there. So, I just want to make sure everybody gets out there and exercises our beautiful democracy.
Absolutely.
All right, with that, I am going to make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Mr. Wilson, do you?
We don't have any public comments.
We do not tonight.
Okay.
All right, all in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
All right, have a good evening, everyone.
Aye.
Congratulations.